Well, it's 6:00 PM tonight and it's the regular meeting of the ISD 728 School Board, Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM. First order of business is let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just be aware of the protocol reminders and our statement of core values, which are in the agenda. I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Point of order. Discussion.
We have to second the motion before we discuss.
Second.
Got a second. Now, open for discussion.
I was looking at the agenda and we had, the Policy Committee had recommended 606.5 beyond the agenda. It didn't make it on for today. It's too late to put it on because everyone would need to read it first. So my concern isn't about getting it on, it's about if the Policy Committee makes the recommendation and decisions are made otherwise, as a courtesy, just to give the board a heads up so we're aware of the situation and why.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the agenda?
If I can ask about that. So, so the board wasn't aware that that wasn't going to be on there? Once the agenda came out, yes, I was aware. But I had, the Policy Committee had recommended it be a first reading for tonight, so I had expected to see it on the agenda.
Okay.
The policy, 606, you said?
606.5.
Oh, 606.5. Got it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. First order of business is our astute recognition in our student leadership. We have Hankey Center. Jamie, just use your mom voice.
Thank you for letting us do our student leadership recognition this evening. I'm going to turn and face the audience. We need to recognize our youngest learners tonight from the Hankey Center and our early childhood programs across the district. So I'm going to first have Owen Turek join me up here in the front. You need to come up here. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Owen. Owen, we have had the privilege of having Owen in our Discovery Learning Class for two years. He is so special to everyone who meets him in our room. He loves to build and create with friends in the classroom and always has the most insightful questions about what is happening in class. The growth that he has exhibited in the last two years shows what a strong little guy he is and his quiet perseverance is a lesson to everyone around him. Owen is funny and intuitive and we know that he will love kindergarten next year. Congratulations, Owen.
Check.
Next, we have Aman at Beaverfield. Could you come up?
Aman is an amazing little girl. She is excited to come to school every day. She is caring and empathetic towards her classmates and teachers. She knows and follows the rules in and out of the classroom. She is attentive and eager to learn. She is always excited about learning and exploring new things. She follows the routines. She can be a little shy, but she has made so much progress over the year. She has many close friends and is a wonderful role model to all the students in our all-day class. Aman is very excited to go on to kindergarten. She knows her letters and sounds, her numbers, how to write her name, and shows enthusiasm in all of her daily activities here at Atsigo Elementary. I am very proud of her maturity, her ability to stay on task, and how she continues to be a strong leader for all students. Congratulations. To invite Owen and his family and any staff up for a picture and then Aman's family and staff will take a group picture quick. You can come. We'll just take a couple steps back and then we'll face this way, okay? Congratulations, students.
It's done now. Whoa. So I'll just repeat that. Each year, artwork from two students per school is selected to be on display at the district office here. Students whose artwork is currently on display for the next year will be recognized. So we invite Ms. Leah Schultz, art specialist at Twin Lakes Elementary School. Will share a video of the new student artwork. Take it away.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I do want to thank everybody quick. I know May is busy and we have lots of things going on, so thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I also want to thank the board for continuing this tradition. It's very important to our students and artists and I love that it lets them shine here at our school. Damian Houston is the art teacher responsible for making all of the prints ready to hang in our district office. Londa is so great about taking my messages all the time, right to the last minute. And of course, I want to thank the student artists for doing such a great job on their art and all the art teachers who have encouraged them this last year. And then, last but not least, parents, thank you for encouraging art in your children. John kind of mentioned the process already, so I won't go over this totally, but just know that the original art is back with the kids. The posters hang here at the school. And then after this year, they go back to the homeschool. I know at Twin Lakes Elementary, our office is full of art that has happened over the years and it's, again, just an amazing collection. Now, we're going to watch a video of the art and then after this, we'll present the certificates. Anyhow. Okay, how do I get out of here now? Do you know? Scotty told me if I click the button. Yeah, let's just do... Okay, there we go. As you can see, the art is a lot to celebrate in our district, so great job, everybody. Now, we're going to present the certificates to our student artists. So we'll call school by school. We're going to start with high school first, then middle school, ending with elementary. As your child is called, "Come to the front," you'll get your certificate and then get a picture taken. After you are presented to your, with your certificate, you are free to leave, but do check in the district office for your child's art. Some are in one of the offices as well. So here we go with presenting the certificates. Now, it's not going to the next slide. Oh, dear. All right. First, we'll start with Elk River High School. Our teachers, Lisa Rebovich, Damian Houston, and Erin Fleming. Sure. For Elk River High School, I'd like to announce Kayla. Do you want me to push it? Are you sure? Congratulations. Next, we have Rogers High School. Our teacher, Mark Peterson and Shauna Rafferty.
At Rogers, we're recognizing Bethany Brammer and Lola Haven.
Beautiful art. Want me to push the picture? She's in there. Yeah. Awesome. All right, next is Zimmerman High School. Our teachers, Tina Karduba and Emily Zahn. I know Emily, they said they might not be able to make it tonight, so... Beautiful. And next, we have Ivan Sand Community High School. Our teacher, Veronica Jacques. Student artist, I know one is here, is Charlie Christie. Are you? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you couldn't come today.
No, it's good.
Hi, Dan.
All right. I have a certificate for Albert Chang and Charles Christie.
And next, we have Online ISD 728. Our teacher, Erin Fleming. And the amazing art from Online is artist Bailey Upstall and Trinity Wilkins. We'll be sure to get them their certificates. Next, we're moving to middle school, so we'll start with Prairie View Middle School. Our teachers, Veronica again. Are you presenting? All, all of you, yes. Come on up. I'll let you know.
Presenting for Usura Tumse.
And Brockton Hare.
Did you get it? Oops, sorry. Next, Rogers Middle School. Our teacher, Chris Enga. How about our student artists? Is Elan Sandstrom or Sophia Lore here tonight? Sophia, congratulations, honey. You get all the attention, Sophia. Next, Sock Middle School. Our teacher, Caitlin Yurki.
For Sock Middle School, I have Nicholas Yevdokov and Katie Grenier.
Great job. Next, Vandenberg Middle School. Our teacher, Chad Jirzak.
Vandenberg would like to honor tonight Sophia De Mars and Addison Cole.
And Zimmerman Middle School. Emily Zahn and Tina Karduba.
I'd like to honor Jolena Yang and Aubrey Madsen.
Now, we're moving to elementary. Oh, gosh. Oh, gosh. What's happening? There we go. We'll start with Hassan Elementary. Our teacher, Audrey Erdel.
Hassan Elementary wants to honor Kayla Jeong and Alexis Peterson.
Next, Lincoln Elementary. Our teacher, Art Teacher Tina Reichel. And she had something come up tonight, so I know she's not here. But Veda Christensen and Violet, if they could come get their certificates. Veda, congratulations. Violet, congratulations. Next, we have Meadowvale Elementary. Our teacher, Bill Hammer.
For Meadowvale, we'd like to recognize Grady M. and Ella S.
Next is Parker Elementary. Our teacher, Sarah Patton. Oh, there you are. Sorry.
Parker would like to recognize Evelyn Block and Nora Gatske.
Next is Atsigo Elementary. Our teacher, Jerry Getch. Final lock down for the school board, huh?
So first up is Riley. Come on up, Riley. Good job. And I don't see Mackay. Nope, okay. So it's just the two of us.
Next is Prairie View Elementary School. Our teacher, Carly Christensen.
Prairie View would like to recognize Hazel Benson and Ira Avery.
Absolutely. Yep. All right, big smiles. Next, we have Rogers Elementary School. Our teacher, Sophia Durand.
Rogers Elementary would like to recognize Nora Duroff and Aiden Leckie.
All right, next is Twin Lakes Elementary School, where I am the art teacher. And the students I'm going to recognize tonight is Ryland Wolf. She did the Minnesota. And then Vincent Schultz is actually my kid. And next, we have Westwood Elementary School. Our teacher, Lindsay Sokal and Mary Farber. And next we have Westwood Elementary School, art teacher Lindsay Sokel and Mary Farber.
First of all, I don't know what this has turned with the back like that, but anyway. I know, so here I am. And first I wanted to say thank you, Leah, for always heading this up every year and keeping us informed and all that stuff. You are awesome. Okay. And secondly, okay, I guess this is the advantage of being one of the last two classes. You don't have to do so much of a crowd. When I pick out a piece of artwork for this, not only do I look at their talents, but I also look at them being a fantastic role model. And these two girls rock. They are just wonderful. So first we have Cece Glenn. Yay, in fourth grade, she did that awesome snowman. And Lila Fluger, she did the beautiful cardinal there. So Lila Fluger.
All right, thanks for hanging in for Zimmerman Elementary, art teacher Linda Richardson. Come on up.
Hello, am I the last one? All right. Okay. Zimmerman Elementary would like to honor, recognize Ricky Preng and Joe Strauss. Two amazing artists and also role models in our school. I am so proud of both of you. Here you go, sweetheart.
And that concludes our art recognition. Thank you again, everyone, for coming and celebrating art tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for all your work on that. It's awesome to see you.
Thank you to the staff and the students that make all this possible. We got a lot of young artists in training. And right now, the gallery is open and the admission is free. So please enjoy. We move on to the next part of our meeting, so I think everybody got the signal. If you'd like to go look at the art, this is a good time to go do that. If you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but the next portion of the agenda is our public comment. And the first person we have tonight is Jenny Erickson. And welcome, Jenny.
All right, I'm here to talk again about the Little Theater. I have to tell you guys that that is stressful. That timer and the three minutes, it causes a lot of anxiety, makes you feel like you don't want to hear from the public, and it makes speaking to you a lot harder. So I just have to say that that's stressful. But I'm going to do my best. I'm not a public speaker like my daughter is in theater. But this is kind of my final plea to you all with the Little Theater. I know that you guys are aware now that back in 2002, a large sum of money was given from the city to the district, and that was to maintain the Little Theater. It sounds like from reading the meeting minutes that they were going to build an art room, and the district promised to put seats and new carpeting in the theater. That was never done. You could go in there today and see that it's the same seat and carpet from the '70s. We've been trying to get answers of where that money went, to really no avail, kind of some, you know, no hard data with it, but some guesses as to where it may have went, or possibly an art room that was built and then money was paid back. We did talk to the city. The city council actually lets you speak for as much, or as long as you want. I spoke with them, it was actually quite pleasant. But we do have the support from all city council. They said that it's out of their hands as far as where the money went, but they would love to see the theater remain a theater, the mayor included. So then we did a data request, just because in this process, a lot of stuff just really didn't make sense with what repurposing that space was, what it was going to be used for. So we did a data request and found that in 2019, there was, in the referendum, there was a bullet point that said that the district would improve and renovate the theater and building C, which is the Little Theater. Not repurpose, but renovate and improve the theater. So very specific verbiage was used. It's important to note that back
One minute.
It's important to note that back in 2002, when that money was given, the ZAB theater remained then. In 2019, the ZAB theater remained then. And in both instances, people found that the Little Theater was useful and valuable enough to give large sums of money for it, large sums of taxpayer money. So my plea is to you is to uphold your promise to the taxpayers in the 2019 referendum and not to repurpose the space, but to renovate and improve it. Doesn't mean you have to dump millions of dollars into the theater. It's a space that's already a theater. It'd be great if you could do the seats and the carpeting and make it a little bit more presentable, but I know that it's been said that data shows that that space is underutilized. But maybe if, I don't know, it was presentable, maybe it would be used more. I know a couple board members here were part of the 2019 referendum. I don't know if maybe, I'll give the grace that it's forgotten about, that that was an item, but I feel like at this point, all of you have the opportunity that once you know better, you do better. And we're asking that you really do what they wanted to do back in 2002 and in 2019 and preserve this space. So that's all, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Jenny. The second speaker tonight is Sally Anton.
Hello. Greetings Superintendent Elmos, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Febrig, and Directors of the Board. My name is Sally Anton, and I have a ninth grader at Rogers High School. I stand before you today to speak on the changes to Policy 606 that are being proposed specifically in Section 3A. It starts off, quote, "The school board recognizes the expertise of the professional staff and affirms the importance of their involvement in the review and recommendation of instructional tests, materials, and curriculum. The school board will approve the curriculum selected for purchase," and here's the concerning part for me, quote, "retains final authority on these selections. The last time I spoke in front of you, I urged you to trust the professionals when it comes to curriculum. The reason for my ask at the beginning of the board's term was because I was a little worried that something like this was going to come out being things that I saw on social media and some of the campaigning that I saw. I believe that the board retained final authority on curricula to be overreached in terms of governance, and I believe there is a lack of expertise on the board to make those decisions." So let's talk about what curriculum and instruction specialists do. I'm quoting from an article found on teachingdegree.org titled "How to Become a Curriculum and Instruction Specialist." The first piece of advice? Advice, pretty simple, earn your degree. Curriculum and, sorry, quoting, "Curriculum and instruction specialists often hold a master's degree in their field. In order to evaluate instructional standards and design materials that meet state curriculum goals, educators need the advanced training provided by a master's program. Grad students in curriculum and instruction gain valuable research and assessment skills which they apply when evaluating test scores or other student learning metrics. Students of this also learn about different curriculum models, instructional theories, and learning theories, which they use to design curricula for school districts." The next piece of advice, earn your license. Finally, the question is posed, how long does it take to become a curriculum and instruction specialist? Quote, "Most curriculum and instruction specialists have a master's degree and teaching experience. Before becoming a specialist in the field, educators must complete a bachelor's degree, which typically takes four years, and earn a teaching license. After working as a teacher for several years, educators can pursue a master's in curriculum and instruction, which typically takes two to three, or I'm sorry, one to two years. This sounds minimally like six to eight years of experience. While I very much respect that this board is made of diverse working backgrounds, there is only one person, to my knowledge, who has been a full-time educator. I am unaware if they've been involved in curriculum writing at the district later, level. If they have, that's still only 14% of the board. I urge you to send the policy back for revision, removing this dangerous new language in Policy 606. You are not serving your community or constituents by having the board have the final authority on curriculum selections. To borrow a concept from one of my favorite books, Good to Great, you need to govern at a higher level by putting the right people in the right seats on the bus, not governed by being all the people on the bus. That's not going to get you anywhere. Thank you very much for your time."
Thank you, Sally. Our third speaker tonight is Brad Schumacher, our county commissioner.
I'm Brad Schumacher, Sherburne County, Commissioner District 5, representing Livonia Township, City of Zimmerman, City of Baldwin, and South Side of Princeton. It's a privilege to be here today. I feel immensely grateful to be in the company of a school board that exemplifies the principles of free speech, setting a commendable standard for our students. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation for your decision to reinstate the live open forum as outlined in the rollback of Policy 206. Now let's dive into something fun and exciting, civil engineering. It's such a fantastic career path for our students, and this year, we're getting, they are going to get to see it in action in Zimmerman. What a great opportunity. With safety as a top priority, the county is embarking on a road construction project from County Road 4, from 10th Street to County Road 45. We know students will be walking to and from school along these roads. Being able to create a safe, walking, walkable path is paramount. Along County Road 4, students and other pedestrians were walking in the ditches and other unexpected areas. This project will safely move pedestrians through and across the corridor, improve traffic flow, and reduce speeds, and increase safety in the entire corridor. In more densely developed areas such as cities, our roadways end up serving vehicles, biking, and pedestrians. We also have to accommodate four-wheelers and snowmobiles during our outdoor recreation. This road construction project and safe walking trails is vital to partnerships with property owners, businesses, and especially organizations just like yours at ISD 728. You've probably noticed utility work has started. We expect to close County Road 4 on June 9th, with the 4 and County Road 4 roundabout being completed at the end of August. The goal is to have the entire project wrapped up by October. This will springboard us into the Zimmerman Interchange Project with scheduled construction in '25 and '26. More information on the interchange will be available in June at the to-be-scheduled Public Information Open House. I could not end the conversation without inviting all the wonderful members of the Elk River School Board, your dedicated staff, and everyone who had joined us to attend the Sherburne County's Best Parade. It's at noon on May 24th, called Wild West Days. I would, you could find any of the details you want at wildwestdays.org, and thank you. I'll take my art project with, since I don't think you guys are going to give me any awards for this, but they're set up.
Thank you, Brad. You can display it out in the lobby there. I don't think you're going to get a certificate for that, though. Thank you to all of our public speakers tonight for public comment. Moving on, we have the general reports, and Superintendent Elmos.
Well, good evening, school board members. Thanks for the opportunity, as always, to give you a report. How exciting is it to see our student artwork? I always love this meeting, to see what they have produced and to see our art teachers bring that work forward. So thanks for giving us the time and the attention and letting us bring kids in front of you. I just think that's such a good thing for us to do. Two updates in my report to give you. The first is our school perceptions survey. We are off and running with our survey data. As of this morning, 760 staff members have responded, and 1,090 parents have responded to the survey. The student survey kicked off today as well, so we're starting to see some of that trickle in, depending on the time of day that our teachers put it, you know, in their dedicated time to give kids to fill it out. So we'll start to see a lot more of those coming in. And just a reminder that the deadline for this is May 19th. So we want to make sure we try to have that done by May 19th, so we can start to compile and to put that aggregate data together. The last update I have for you is just the Little Theater. It has been a topic of conversation, right? Phone calls, emails, and a few things that we have seen across the school district. I just wanted to address, our team has spent some time, quite a bit of time, digging into this. Obviously, I wasn't superintendent at the time, right? So our team has spent some time saying, okay, what went into this conversation and how did this go? So we have found that $563,000 donation from the city. We did receive that money that was paid to us over five years. So there was a five-year payment, a lump sum that came in once a year to give us that donation. So grateful for the city giving that all those years ago. I mean, we're, you know, we're looking at almost 25 years ago now that that donation did come in. We were able to track down board minutes at the time, and the art renovation and addition that was done was tied out to a bid of $563,191. So we believe that that renovation did happen because of that donation. And there are some documents, as Jenny mentioned tonight, that were kind of floating around as part of that, to confirm that that did, we did receive that, and that did happen. I did want to clarify, too, there is some, I don't know, rumors or things floating around about, does the city of Elk River own the Little Theater? And the answer is no, right? We retain ownership of that Little Theater. There would be obviously deeds and things that would have to happen if that were to happen across the district with any property, and there is none of that that exists in the district. We also have spent some time with our city partners, talking that through, and they too do not have any deeds or anything to prove that that ownership was transferred. So from what we can gather in the documentation we have, we own, we retain, and we do have the decision-making authority over that Little Theater. The Little Theater was listed on the 2019 referendum building flyers. It's one of the top things that was listed there. So I think, you know, there's going to come a decision for this board to make about what we want to do with that theater space. This, as you know, that referendum was a 10-year plan. When that referendum passed, there was 10 years' worth of work. There was the big seven projects that we committed to get done, and then each building had their own flyer. So Elk River High Schools did include that Little Theater in the conversation. So that 10-year plan ends in 2029. So as we sit here in 2025, we're, you know, three to four to five years left of the work and the projects that have to happen. That Little Theater space is on our schedule for 2027 to be talked about, right? I think through some of the data requests and things that have popped up, there is communications that are out there asking whether we should keep it as a theater. And those conversations did start even when I was here in 2022 and 2023, to say, what's the usage like in that theater? Is this a space we should be dedicating this amount of money to renovate? And so I think that that decision is going to face this board, right? Do we want to preserve it as it is, as a Little Theater? You know, remodel it for other space, for other usage, right? As you can imagine, we hear about space needs all the time, right? Some of our programs that we currently house are asking and advocating really hard to say, could we get a little bit of space through some project over here or over there, right? On our facility tours, we saw things like gymnastics at Prairie View Elementary School, right? Some of those things will continue to bubble up over time in our facility planning. So there really is no decision to make about this Little Theater at this time. It is in the 10-year plan, and that decision will be facing us coming up. So I wanted to just highlight those things because I know that we do have some community folks that are asking those questions. So with that, I will stand for questions from the board.
Any questions?
Thank you for that update, though. Thank you.
I have a question. So what was, how did this evolve to maybe getting it taken care of or maybe not? It looked like it was a promise to the voters. And just to be honest, I think that if it was put on by the taxpayers to say, yep, this is what we want, the vote passed, I feel like that's not our decision anymore because it went to the people.
Sure, yep. Yeah, I think that's a valid question. I think we're going to have to answer as we get to that renovation period, right? I think the question that remains is if the primary user of that facility is an outside organization, do we feel the same way, right? When we have other district-run programs that are kind of clamoring for space at times. So I think it's a decision this board may have to make as we hit So, I think it's a decision this board may have to make, as we hit that renovation in 2027.
Could we get the information, Superintendent Elmos, of who's used that in the past? Because I have heard from people that football, I don't know, some sports go in there for a little bit for something. I'm not sure why, but...
Sure, yep. Yeah, we can provide to you what we have, right? I mean, I don't know about how far back you're thinking, right? Because this does go back a long ways.
Just the last few years.
Yeah, we can pull some of that information together, for sure, right? What won't be on there is if, like, people just go in there, right? You know, if it's not being used and not scheduled, and somebody chooses to use it, like the football team as an example, right? It may or may not be on the list of a scheduled event, right? So, we can pull that together, though, for sure, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, I've asked before, you mentioned a 10-year plan, and it's on the list. I'd like to see the list, just so we know what's coming in the next 10 years, because that would have been great information to have. Also, we always vote on projects one at a time, have the money one at a time, and that's, I've said this before, but it'd be helpful to see the long-term plan where we're making decisions now of what's coming for later. Especially as we go over the budget this afternoon.
Yep, well said. We normally bring the long-term facility maintenance plan in June, and this year, we have said that we probably should rewind a little bit and go, okay, what's on the docket here for the next couple of years, right? The, I think, we got into a routine of projects needed to get done, and we were moving through those projects, but I think now is the time for us to stop and go back and go, okay, here's the actual plan going forward, to wrap this up, right? So, hear you loud and clear, and we'll make that happen.
Is there, sorry, question? Is there record of, like, what currently has been spent with the referendum and how much money is left for the projects we have left on the list?
There is, absolutely, there is. It's a, it's a very comprehensive document. So, when that referendum was passed, this was a blend of long-term facility maintenance and referendum spending, right? So, referendum is one portion of our long-term facility maintenance plan. So, if you look at a project, say, take Lincoln Elementary, right? That was one of the big seven, right? That might be, I'm just throwing out percentages, I'd have to look, but that might be 90% referendum and 10% long-term facility maintenance, right? And every project will have a ratio like that. So, it's not as simple as, like, getting you a spreadsheet and saying, there it is, right? We'd almost have to go project by project and look at the blend of LTFM and referendum dollars. But yeah, we can pull that together, maybe as part of the upcoming projects. Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Any other discussion? Let's move on to the committees. The first committee is the facilities. Director Steinbrecher.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. We did not have our meeting. We're kind of in waiting for Hazel's study to come back, to kind of see what the student demographic is and all of that stuff. So, we did not have a facilities meeting. Nothing new to update, but we're hoping to get that study back this month, and then we'll have a meeting to continue to move forward with facilities.
Okay, thank you, Director Steinbrecher. Superintendent Valuation, Director Weiss. I think we're on that, there's nothing to do with that committee meeting right now. That's going to be a future event that's going to be occurring.
Yep.
And then, moving on to policy, the policy committee, the last time we met, we had several different policies up for the three-year renewal process, and a little bit extended on the Policy 606. Dr. Rock gave us an extended preview of how curriculum was selection and how the process worked. Currently, the math curriculum is in process of review. That review and selection process are very robust, and our staff is, many different schools are involved in that process, and all I've heard is good things so far. And 606, some of the edits would align with the MSBA model policy, so that's where that comes from. And as we've discussed at the policy committee, statute 120B.11 talks about board representation, or broad representation of the committee, and currently, Director Madsen is on the District Advisory Committee. If you look in statute 120B.11, you'll find the definition of what that is there. So, she's part of the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee that the district has set up. And Policy 606, the idea was, is to adapt that policy to the MSBA model policy. I've talked with other districts and through the MSBA coffee and conversation, that's pretty much aligned with, most districts have that model policy as their standard policy, so that's why the changes were made. And it has nothing to do with the trust that we have in our administration and our faculty and our staff on selecting curriculum. It's just the final approval process to approve the curriculum and appropriate the budget and the spending for that. As Director Nordos mentioned earlier, Policy 606.5, I'll take that as an air. I should have communicated that better, that we just pulled that from this agenda, to give Superintendent Elmos a little bit more time to do some research on that, make sure that we're aligned with our media specialists on selection and the criteria of media materials and library materials. So, that's what that policy is all about. And there was some confusion from MSBA legal counsel, Terry Morrow. Originally, he said that every district's required to have a Policy 606.5 as a legal document in statute, and now he's kind of retracted that and said, well, maybe it could be just in procedures. So, that was kind of the culmination of maybe holding back on that policy to make sure we got all of our, you know, Ts crossed and all the dots there that we need for that. So, in Minnesota statute, it's 134.51, which is driving that policy. So, anyways, that's the review of the policy committee. The next meeting will be on Monday, this coming Monday, so a week from today, at 4:00. Any questions or discussion about policy? Director Nordos.
Thanks. One quick note on there, that the policy committee, in discussing 606, the curriculum, keeping everything as is, nothing's changing in the recommendation and the way the curriculum is approved, the whole process is the same. It's just looping the board in. And in doing that, Director Madsen, who is already on the advisory committee, we had recommended that that become an actual board-appointed position, so that she could then report to the board at these meetings after a advisory meeting, to keep us in the loop on where they're at and what's going on, just so we know what they're working on.
Thank you for that addition. Any other comments, discussion? If not, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and Northwest Suburban Integration School District Vice Chair Freiberg, do you have anything to add?
No, I was able to connect with Heather, and I'm looking forward to her presentation.
And tonight, we want to welcome Heather Like, Executive Director of the Northwest Suburban Integration School District. That's always a mouthful to say. And she's going to provide us a little update on what is happening. Take it away. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me here this evening. Appreciate a few minutes of your time. I'll just tell you right off the bat that there are a lot more, there's a lot more details in these slides than we're going to go over, so you have a brochure in front of you that kind of goes over the specifics and details, so if you want to dig in deeper, you can, and you have access to the slides as well. But what I was asked to do is to just give a quick little overview of what Northwest Suburban is, and also how that applies specifically to ISD 728. So, we'll just go quickly through some basic foundational slides. So, the basics of Northwest Suburban, first of all, is that we support seven member school districts, Anoka Hennepin, Brooklyn Center, Buffalo Hanover Montrose, Fridley, all of y'all, Osseo, and Rockford. And so, those are our seven districts, and with those seven districts, we're going to go through some of the foundational pieces that create the support that we provide, and we've been around since 2001. I've been the executive director with Northwest Suburban now for two years. We provide student opportunities and staff supports predominantly, that's our main focus. And with that, we have three predominant pillars of service. The first one is our magnet sites. That's probably what we're most known for, is for supporting our 27 magnet schools across our seven districts. With that, we provide transportation to and from our magnet sites. That is, we also help with the process to make sure that any cost of that transportation is reimbursed by the state, so ultimately, it doesn't cost the district anything. We organize the prioritized lottery enrollment, so students have two opportunities throughout the year to process through the lottery, so that they have the opportunity to go to any of the 27 magnet schools, whether they're the ones that are in Elk River or outside of ISD 728. We also support magnet grants whenever we have those. We're just finishing up a federal grant right now. We also do reflection and review cycles to provide feedback on a three-year cycle for each of our magnets, to make sure they're aligned with the five pillars of the Magnet Schools of America. And then, we provide support for our curriculum integration specialists. So, those are the individuals at your magnet schools that are helping to make sure that the STEM themes, the art themes, the IB themes are really strong and aligned with national and state recommendations. So, that's the magnet services we provide, but we also have two other pillars that I'll talk about in a minute. Our current magnets that we provide across our 27 districts are the Arts Experience, the International Baccalaureate Experience, and the STEM STEAM Experience. And if you want to read more about those, leave that slide for you to kind of dig into deeper when you have more time. And then, as far as our magnet schools, you can see what Northwest Suburban, what our actual footprint looks like, and these are the, where the schools are spread out, our 27 magnets are the ones that have the little stars throughout this map. But I'm going to focus specifically on ISD 728. In ISD 728, we have two magnet schools that are directly supported by Northwest Suburban regarding enrollment and then also transportation. And what that equates to, as far as student numbers, is we have 71 students scheduled for 25, 26 school year coming into ISD 728 and only 24 leaving. So, those dollars, those student-allocated dollars, travel with those students, so that's a plus for y'all fiscally. So, just giving you the little heads up. So, those are your statistical numbers for next year. This year, it's a little different. I think it's a difference of about two students, if I remember correctly, but, you know, they graduate sometimes, and it plays with our numbers. And then, we have two other pillars that we offer as well. We have our college and career pillars. So, these are our pillars that we offer for mentorships. We have our Essence Mentorship and our Step Up Mentorship, and our Essence Mentorship predominantly focuses on students who need to build a little bit more confidence in their skill set, and will help them in careers and college, and helps them have that self-confidence that they need in order to take that next step. And then, our Step Up Program is more for students who tend to need a little bit more organization, a little more structure, in order to get to those next steps of career and college. And then, along with those mentorship programs, we also offer post-secondary experiences, college visits, career fairs, volunteer activities, conferences. For instance, we just had our Giving Voice Leadership Conference. ISD 728 had many students that attended, and it provides 17 different competitions and events, as well as guest speakers and different people from across various corporations and colleges for students to experience and ask questions of, and it's this one-day celebration of learning and skills. And we had over 500 students across our seven districts come together that day, and it was just a beautiful experience. We also do field experiences and Educators Rising, where we work towards growing our own teachers. As we know, sometimes it can be hard to fill some of those positions, so getting people interested in education before they even leave our schools' doors is really important. So, that's one of our pillars. Also, I'll point out that our college and career pillars are not exclusive just to those magnet schools. Every single school in ISD 728 can benefit from these programs if they choose to participate. And most, especially your high school, the high school, middle schools, really lean heavily into the college and career supports here. And then, I will also just add that we have our other pillar, which is our education support. So, we provide professional development for staff, and that includes everyone from classroom teachers, to your ESPs, paraprofessionals, to your principals and cabinet-level members, as well as our superintendents, who come and sit together and work on different problems that are impacting all seven of our districts. They come together once a month to talk about those. And then, we also do different cultural enrichments. Most well-known is our Multicultural Resource Center, which is an artifact archive, so essentially a library of artifacts from across the globe that teachers can check out, and they can use them in their lessons, they can use them in display cabinets, sometimes they'll have an event or a fair, and they'll even ask us to come and sit at one of those tables and facilitate some of that learning as parents and students come around. So, those are the three main pillars that we offer for Northwest Suburban. So, I just talked briefly about how that's funded. It's funded through achievement and integration dollars, which you're probably familiar with. Our achievement and integration dollars are actually anchored in two state statutes. The 124Ds are anchoring our state statutes that, for achievement and integration. In these two state statutes, they talk about racially-isolated school districts and putting together plans that help to integrate, to reduce achievement disparities, and to increase access to effective and diverse teachers across the state. And so, Brooklyn Center, Osseo, and eventually Fridley and Anoka Hennepin were classified as such, and then they partner with Buffalo Hanover Montrose, ISD 728, and Rockford, and by doing that partnership, each of our member districts then receives the maximum amount of achievement and integration dollars. So, essentially, what that comes down to is achievement and integration dollars for some schools are an automatic. You have to fill out a plan, and you have to apply to receive them, but you don't get the max unless you are partnered with another district that has a different racially-isolated classification. Then, we have other districts that don't classify for achievement and integration on their own, but when they partner with a district that does, then they do. So, what that means for ISD 728 is it means that for you, you qualify for almost $2 million for the next school year, and you would not qualify for that if you weren't partnering with Northwest Suburban. So, we're very thankful for your partnership, and it benefits you as well. And then, with that, 8% of that actually comes to Northwest Suburban, and that's all the programs that are in this brochure that we're talking about today. They come to you through 8% of those dollars, 92% you guys keep. So, just some highlights of the achievement and integration rules are just highlighted here, if you're curious, but all of them mention the magnet schools, the college and career readiness, which is our focus. And so, I just highlighted a couple of those, in case you don't want to go through and read all of the 124Ds, because they're not that enlightening of a read. They do make me fall a little sleepy when I'm reading them. But anything, but basically, that's what we do. So, these are our three pillars of service, and if you have any questions, I'm welcome to answer them now.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, so the process, just to kind of clarify, so if you're a student of ISD 728, and you want to go to a magnet school, preferably in ISD 728, that's what you want to do, is it full lottery? Do you have any precedent, because you're already in that district, to go there? How does that process work?
Yeah, so we have a three-priority lottery system, and so, the priorities, the first priority, I hope I'm going to get this correct, don't quote me if I'm in the wrong order, but one of the priorities is if their sibling already attends that school and/or if their parent works at that school. And then, the next one is if they're in a middle school or a high school, have they already started that theme? So, if you were at a STEM school as an elementary student, and you want to go to a STEM school as a middle school student, you have priority over someone who's just coming in at the middle school level, or someone who's, say, switching from arts to STEM. And then, the third priority is based on zip code, and that's because, that goes back to the achievement and integration rules, so trying to create that balance. So, what we do is we look at what zip codes have a high socioeconomic average, and which ones have lower socioeconomic average for the family populations, and then we try to create, we aim to create a closer balance, if possible, through the zip code process. And that does get redone every year, based on allocations at the state level, and we have that publicized on our website prior to each lottery, so people can see it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question to follow up with that. So, does that mean, like Shane asked, if you live in 728, do you have priority over any other students?
Yes-ish. So, each district has their own policies that we have to follow as well, and so, yes for ISD 728, but that's not the same for all seven of our districts. And so yes, for ISD 728, but that's not the same for all seven of our districts. And essentially, what we do there is our schools, the schools themselves, they get to let us know who those students are before we actually do the lottery process itself. But essentially, that's what it works out to be. Other questions?
I have a question. How do you measure effectiveness of the program?
I love that question so much, you have no idea. So I am in my second year at, at Northwest Suburban and the measurement of effectiveness has been sporadic. So one thing that we've really started in the last two years is collecting intentional data. So one, for instance, with our college and career programs, we're no longer just collecting, like, attendance records. We're also looking at which students are attending multiple events. We're also connecting with those students. So after each of those events, they have the opportunity to provide feedback about the event, as opposed to it just being a one-and-done event, which we know doesn't have the same level of effectiveness. Same thing is true with our professional development series. We're also collecting similar data, just with our adults. And then for our magnet schools, we have really fine-tuned our reflection and review process, which is at every three-year rotation so that we can see how schools are improving. They get to set their own goals based on feedback that's provided through the process. But then we check in with them each year. It used to be you have the review process, we'll see you again in three years. Now you have the review process and we have check-ins at year two and year three. And then we use that to help decide what their goals will be for the next reflection and review. So it's really a cycle and no longer just a every-three-year rotation.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Appreciate the update. For governance, the next item on the agenda, oop, we got to skip, we got the Minnesota High School League.
Couple more appointments and updates, yep. Minnesota State High School League, I represent the district at the Section VII AA Committee Meetings. We met a couple weeks ago for our quarterly meeting. In there was kind of a winter sport recap. We'll spend some time kind of talking about how those section tournaments went and, you know, some small, some small changes that may be needed for that. Talking about spring sport updates, particularly, again, those section competitions leading into state. And then we go through various things to be reviewed, discussed, and approved from the Activities Directors' Meetings, which are usually the week prior in those, in those quarterly meetings. Kind of a variety of topics. From kind of small tweaks, again, how section or state tournaments are run to kind of bigger, bigger topics. One of interest is they will be extending, or in the process of extending, the state wrestling tournament, an additional half, half a day. And that is due to the growth in girls' wrestling program as a individual program outside of boys. That's continued to grow over the last few years. So there'll be more opportunities for girls to compete at that level, which is great to see. And, I mean, that's kind of, that's, that's the main updates from that. Again, that's coming at the section level, not anything significant to report or new at the state level at this time, so.
Thank you, Director Weiss. And then the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Directors, Hamlin, Madsen, do you have anything?
Yes. On Friday, May 2nd, AMSD held their Board of Directors' Meeting. The Executive Director, Scott Coonsquist, gave a detailed legislative update. And then the members voted to approve the AMSD Conference Committee Priorities. And then next, we heard from Pelsby, the legislative priorities for, for the teacher legislate, the teacher licensure program, from both Executive Directors and the Vice Chair. Then what they did is they broke out all of us into small groups. And then we had discussions, there were superintendents as well, mixed in with school board members. We discussed the best, how to best streamline teacher licensing, licensing to meet the needs of students. And then the Pelsby Directors planned to use what they collected from each of our small groups, have the feedback with their upcoming summer conferences they have or workshops they have going on. And then another topic that was discussed was that AMSD recognizes that the state faces a budget challenge this year. But they also believe that our state policymakers need to uphold the state constitution to secure and create an effective system of public education throughout the state. And so AMSD urges the governor and legislators to fulfill this duty and address their priorities they created. And this year, the governor, the Senate, and the House have significantly different budget targets for education. For example, the governor proposes over $685 million in cuts between now and biennium 28, 29. And then the Senate is very similar. The House does provide $40 million increase in the 26, 27 biennium. And then they want to hold flat funding in the 28, 29 biennium. And so the AMSD supports the education budget targets proposed by the House at the minimum. And even under the House budget target, most school districts will face significant budget shortfalls and staff layoffs. So the legislative session deadline here is quickly approaching, next Monday, May 19th. And right now, both the education policy and the finance bills have not passed yet. I know they met today at 1:00. I wasn't able to find out if there was an update with them or not, but I believe they still haven't passed. And it will be interesting to watch what plays out here in the next week.
Sure. Director Hamlin, anything to add?
No.
Any questions? I think the legislature is still a open, open issue here. I don't know what's going to happen there, but we will see. Next thing is advocacy, board development. Director Weiss, Minnesota School Boards Association.
Yeah, there haven't been any new formal developments or opportunities since we, a few of us attended COSBA. However, there have been various trainings that MSB is sending out and resources continue to look at those. And then we will be looking for additional summer opportunities that will come for the board, so.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then moving on to governance, the school board is asked to review the first readings of the following policies. And you can all see those on the agenda. We'll be asked to approve these policies at a future meeting. The next item on the agenda is operations. Bid awards, Meadowvale Elementary Playground Project. And the motion is to recommend the school board approve the bids for the Meadowvale Elementary Playground Project as attached.
John, I don't want to point in order, but could we get discussion on some, I'd like to know if feedback, being on the policy committee, give people a chance to comment if they've reviewed.
Sure.
So last time, we had lively, lively discussion and we made changes.
Yep.
Sorry.
No problem.
If it's okay.
Yep, we'll, we'll back up. Any discussion on the governance section and policies?
I can add something. With the Policy 606, we do have a Curriculum Advisory Committee coming up here, May, Tuesday, May 20th, I believe. And I will be attending that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can you help me understand what would be the final board decision with the curriculum, then? Would we be able to veto it?
I mean, you, you potentially could, but that probably would be very, I couldn't imagine a situation in that happening because what's, what the process would be is with Director Madsen giving us updates, we know the, the process of the curriculum moving through the system. And that's really, it's more for awareness because ultimately, Statute 120B.11 holds the board accountable for all those areas of budgets, curriculum, policy by state statute. So it's just the involvement of approval, that's it. But it's, it's like with any committee, any effort that the district has with the administration, for example, the calendar committee. We approve the calendar, but it's very rare that you'd ever say, no, we're not going to approve that calendar because if we do, I don't think you'd have very many people volunteering to serve on that committee in the future. So it's really more oversight, operational oversight. It's not down in the weeds and the details.
Is that what the MSBA policy says, too? To have board happen?
Yeah, it's, yes. We're, we're aligned with MSBA policy.
And I can clarify a little bit on that. So once you understand the whole curriculum process, and when we're looking at this, it's, it's two sentences we've changed, just giving board the responsibility of, of the final approval, right? Nothing in the process is changing. That's the standard operating procedure. It's how the curriculum is approved. What it will help us avoid are situations like what happened with the setting four in the past. Remember, there was a committee and they came to the board with approval and the board wasn't on board with it and it didn't go anywhere, right? So a lot of work happened that was for not. By do, setting it up this way, and especially with having a board update go through the, the entire process, we've inserted someone into the process who can report back to the board and continue along the track. So when they're reviewing multiple curriculums at the same time, if there's one that has concerns or questions for a certain reason, it's brought to the board sooner. Because we know way back here at the beginning where they're just introducing the curriculums that they're testing and going through the process of, because they, after they do their discussions and the experts look at them, they roll them out and they test them, you know, different ones, right? And it's a long process that takes a lot of work. So if there's concerns, it's much better to address those concerns early on in the process than when they're ready to go and it's at your door, right? And also, as a, as a board member, if there's questions from the community coming to you, it's important that you're aware of and knowledgeable and you have the information from working with the experts on the curriculum, right? Because you are responsible. So if there's something in the curriculum that doesn't work or doesn't educate the kids for some reason, I mean, yes, we aren't the experts, but we approved it. So just my two cents on it. Thank you.
Chairman, I guess when I look at that process that we put together, for the board to be involved through the whole process would be difficult. Director Nordis, I understand what you're saying, but if there's an issue with the curriculum in the third month of it, I don't feel it's going to come to the board and the board's going to have to give direction on what we're going to do. I simply see this as being the same way it acted before. We just delegated the superintendent to take care of it. What I think the public is seeing is the public is seeing sometimes that staff and administration put together work, bring forward the expertise, and then the board may look at it differently, right? And, and to shoot it down, which the board has full authority, just like when we hire, do anything, we have the final say. If we direct the superintendent to do something, he needs to do it, no matter what it is. So I think what's out there and what I'm understanding is people in the public want to know that just to that point, the expertise, the people going through the entire process, you know, are who we're listening to. And I think it's important for the board to do that, and I think we've done that. I had the privilege of being part of one of the curriculum review years ago. It was extremely overwhelming. You're in a group with 50 to 60 people, they're talking about it, you have new teachers bringing their stuff in, ones that are on the way out explaining what they've seen, the entire process. And I learned very on, or very early on, that they are the expertise in it and what they put together. And it's an extremely thorough process. I mean, they go through a lot, the way they pilot one program, get feedback, and then pilot a whole nother program and get feedback and how they're working back and forth on it. So, I mean, I commend them hugely for their work they do on it. There are thousands and thousands of people hours on those curriculum to bring them forward to the board. And yes, as the board has the final say in it, you know, we would be wise to listen to our staff, administration, who are the experts on this area.
Thank you, Director Steinbrecher. Any other comments?
Would we be able to see if, what the assignments are through Schoolology? Is that what it's called, Schoolology? Okay. Would we be able to look at the assignments? I do know of other neighboring districts that the board could see what the assignments were.
I don't think that has been discussed in policy.
Yeah, I think we're, what we're talking about is the overall curriculum adoption that wouldn't get right down to the assignments, like specifically in Schoolology, right? The teachers would then take their curriculum and design lessons around that curriculum. And that's the stuff that's going to appear in Schoolology for kids. Is that what you're asking?
Right, I'd like to be able to view that if I wanted to.
That would be thousands of, like thousands of them, right?
There is a, there is a parent review process when the curriculum is released. And we talked about that at previous meetings, maybe extending that period a little bit longer.
Yeah, we may not have control over that because that's proprietary information for that company. So we, we work to negotiate, we try to get that as long as possible. Getting a week sometimes is really fairly standard in that process. Because again, they own the information, so they're not going to be real excited sometimes to say, go ahead and, and put it out there. So that's what happens.
Okay. Well, I will email with how that's done in the neighboring districts, that, that the board can, if they want to look at whatever's classroom and their assignments.
Okay. Director Nordis?
Just so everyone's aware, and as you heard, Director Steinbrecher and I disagree on some things, this never happened before. This is just the policy, which we agree on. What we're talking about is how to implement, like the standard operating procedure. So we have time to work that out and develop it, right? What we're saying now is, yes, there's a responsibility to the statute, this is model policy, we should get back to that. Then we'll have to come back, probably as a facilities committee, work with Andy and his staff on, how do we implement this? What does it, when we say there's board has final oversight, how does that get implemented? What does it mean, so?
Right, the, you know, on the policy committee.
Right, what, yeah, sorry, policy committee. Did I say facilities again?
Yeah, you did.
This just rolls off the tongue so much easier.
Of Director Steinbrecher.
I'm ashamed to get that. So yeah, the policy committee will have to work out the operating procedure on how to implement the policy.
Agreed. And, and to Director Nordis' point is, I think it would be good for the board to be able to brought that forward, right? So in the spring, so this process starts in the fall, for our friends out there. And the first, you know, rollout is one program. And then after Christmas or that break, then they roll out a second one, they work through everything. And then typically, it would come through the board, April, May, the board would approve it, and then it would be rolled out across the district the following year. And I think that's when it would be good to have a full update where teaching and learning spends some time going through it at a business meeting, providing us all the stuff, then we have time to review, ask questions, and then the following month approving it. And that process there is what I think we got to define and what that exactly looks like. But in my opinion, that would be appropriate board involvement in it.
Right. And I think at the last policy meeting, Dr. Rock went through a pretty extensive review of how curriculum adoption currently works. And there's a lot of resources involved in that. And currently, they're working on math curriculum. I happened to talk to a teacher that's on that committee and he says both curriculums are excellent, in his opinion. And he said they've put a lot of work into it. So kudos to the administration and the staff for the effort they put into that.
I worry about all those man-hours going into this and then it comes to the board a month or two before it's supposed to be approved. And then someone's like, nope, I don't like it, we're not doing it. That makes me worry, I'll be honest. So I, I'm, I just want to put that out there, I don't have a solution, I just want to think about that.
Sure.
And we would have a board, a board member to contact for questions or concerns. Would that be okay if I reached out to Director Madsen, then, about questions for English and that? Whatever it is.
So just point of clarification, about the curriculum adoption process or about, like, specific assignments in class?
The adoption process and how it's ran and just, I could let her know my questions and see if she crosses it and if she can give me that information.
Yep, I would appreciate that information, too, if you had those questions.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well then, let's move on. Now, we'll get to operations, bid awards, Meadowvale Elementary Playground Project. Need a motion to approve, recommend the school board approve the bids for the Meadowvale Elementary Playground Project as attached.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that? Well, Kim Eisencheck will go ahead and give us an overview of the bid process and respond to any questions.
Yep, so this particular bid process was for playgrounds and we are trying to standardize playgrounds across the district. This is the first of one that we are doing and there's a whole long list of all of our elementary buildings and other buildings that we'll be seeing those across the next couple of years. And so this one, again, is to bring equity across our district in this particular area because we do sometimes have schools that have more ability rather than other schools that have, maybe have less ability to raise funds for things such as that have, maybe have less ability to raise funds for things such as playgrounds. So, again, trying to bring a standard to that. So, we did put out for bid for that, and we did have one company that was a parent low, and they have now pulled their bid because they had some challenges with our bid information and said that they did not respond fully to what we had asked for. And so, we are asking tonight to approve New Look Contracting for the amount of $639,000. And I'd be open to answer any questions you might have.
If I could just add, prior to having a playground replacement schedule in place, like PTAs and parent committees and donations and things were being sought, and what would happen is we would get sort of a, an inequity in some of those dollars being spent on playground replacements. So, board members that were here, if, you know, two or three years ago, we started this conversation to say, what really is the plan for playgrounds long-term? And we view playgrounds as a, is really a core function of an elementary school. And so, that's where, at that time, the decision was made to kind of put a schedule in place so that we'd be ready for this exact thing, and I appreciate the update, Kim.
Is this project is in budget for this school?
Yes, yep.
And dollars that'll be used as this LTFM?
A good portion of it is going to be LTFM, correct.
Thank you.
I have a question. The playground project that you were just talking about, is this the first school that's going to get the new playground? Okay.
Exciting times.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, no other discussion, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Now, don't go away.
We're here for you.
All right. Now, we're on to budgets. These are preliminary budgets. Kim is going to give us an overview of the budgets, and we'll have some opportunity before the next meeting to ask questions concerning those budgets. Of course, we could ask questions tonight also. So, take it away, Kim.
All right, thank you so much. Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Freiberg, board members, superintendent almost. It's good to be here tonight and surprised, well, it's going so fast this school year, and all of a sudden, here we are. And we are looking at budgets for '25, '26, our next school year. We do have a statutory requirement that we need board approval on this budget by July 1st, and so, we tend to bring it early so that you have a chance to look at that, ask your questions, and then we ask for approval. We typically do this in May in this district, again, just to make sure that we have everything buttoned up before the new year's, school year starts, and we meet that statutory requirement. So, I'm going to go through two sets of information tonight, kind of like we did with the revised budget. So, this is the general fund budget we're going to talk about first for '25, '26. So, I believe you had detailed budget books that were provided to you in the agenda as well as this presentation, and these budget materials will be posted on the website once the board approves them, and then the community members will be able to review those as well, anytime that they want to, as well as you can, and any of our staff and parents. We're going to talk about the general fund first, and that's the largest fund that we have. And again, this has information in it regarding the revenues and the expenditures for next school year, and it kind of covers all of the things that go into educating students in our district. We have other funds, and we'll talk about those later, that do other things, but this one is basically revolves around the education of students. So, it deals with administration and regular education, instruction, special education instruction, transportation, kind of our maintenance of things that are going on, and extracurricular activities. So, it covers a lot of things, and it's the biggest one we have. So, some of the things to just point out, we estimate our pupil units because we don't know how many students we're going to be having next year and serving next year, so we do put an estimate in there. We project our revenue kind of based on the information that we currently have with the best information that we have. With the exception of adaptive boulding participation fees, we did have a slight increase for those in this budget, but we have not changed any general education type fees to families in this particular budget. Projected expenditure numbers with our latest information is what we've planned for here. But I do want to caution us because we are deficit spending in this particular budget. And that likely, as we had heard about the AMSD information that's been coming out, we've been talking, the board's been talking even tonight about the situation that's going on at the state of Minnesota with the legislature. We still have some things that are unsettled. But with that, we know that we are deficit spending for '25, '26, and likely will need to make some significant adjustments, or at least adjustments in '26, '27. And that information will become more and more clear, the crystal ball will become clearer once we have information that comes out of the legislature. So, our enrollment projections, this is a good news piece. We are continuing to see increases in enrollment across the district, and we are one of the very many, very, actually, probably very few districts that have that opportunity. And we've seen that year after year where we've seen increases in students. We are seeing that, especially in the south is where we're seeing our increases, and so, we're starting to have discussions about what do we do in the south as far as the number of students we have in our particular sites, and do we need to make some adjustments for enrollment pressures that we might have. We do have some, and continue to have some staffing shortages, although we've been doing and having those conversations over the last couple of years, we're starting to see some relief in that, and that's exciting, and we're very thankful for that as well. And as I mentioned, the legislative session is still one of those where we're kind of waiting on those outcomes. We have, again, the statutory deadline that we need to meet, we do, most of our budgets are based on estimates, and that's very typical, and even with the information on the legislative final work that it ends up being, a lot of our information is still based on estimates because we don't know how many students we'll actually have in our buildings and all of the other things that go with that. We will bring better information back, kind of like we did this year with the revised budget. We'll bring that kind of information back to the school board for consideration next school year in our revised budget process. All right, so, some assumptions that we made when it came to the general fund. Our projected enrollment, we're projecting to be 14,242 students for next year. That would be served by this district. We're projecting a formula increase because there was one built in for this year. So, our per pupil amount, we are projecting at $7,481, which is $200 more than what we received in '24, '25, a 2.75% increase. Again, that's still being discussed at the legislature, that could change, but we're hoping that that amount stays. Interest income, we're expecting a slight decline in interest income because as we have more or less funds in our fund balances, that's what we get paid interest on, just like your checkbook. And we have a metering of payments at 90-10. And so, what that really means is, of the revenue that we earn this year, we get 90% of it in this year, and we have to wait for the additional 10% until next year, and that's very typical. Sometimes, if the legislature gets into an issue, they may change that to be 80-20 or something along those lines, and just doesn't mean anything other than the timing that we receive the funds actually changes. But right now, we're at 90-10. And unemployment income is still one of those things that we are watching closely. And this is really more around summer unemployment because there is a funding gap that we have with summer employment that was implemented by the, by the legislature, kind of one of those unfunded mandates. It was funded for a while, and now we are running out of those funds, and they haven't necessarily decided whether they're going to continue to fund that or not, or how we're going to manage that. So, one of those big questions at the legislature right now. So, those are the general fund revenue assumptions. Here's our breakdown of our general fund revenue, and you can see that the largest amount of money that we receive is from state revenue, 160, almost $164 million. Property taxes come in at about $50 million. We have other local revenue, about $6 million. Our federal revenue and our income, investment income of about $3 million each, and then some miscellaneous sales revenue of about $432,000, which rounds us out for our total revenue picture in '25, '26 of about $226 million. On the expenditure side, we also make some assumptions. One of those assumptions is some additional FTE for staffing. And again, that is to fulfill those referendum promises that were made back in 2019 to maintain our class size, and as we're increasing in students, we need to manage that. The other thing is, because of the model change with special ed, we're needing additional students there for center-based, and so, we are making some adjustments for special ed staffing for next year as well. Salary and benefit changes, we are in a negotiating year starting next year, and so, we have some contractual settlements that we will need to account for, the labor market, staff turnover, and then the current benefit elections by our staff. And so, we're planning for all of those. Transportation, we also have an increase for transportation on the expenditure side because we're kind of changing a few things with that in order to better serve our community and our parents and students. And so, we're doing an opt-out for families. We've always typically done an opt-in, but opt-out will be much more user-friendly for families, making sure that start of school goes well. And then, some of the center-based changes that we're making will also have some transportation implications. Our summer unemployment, we talked a little bit about already, and again, we're planning that we don't, won't have state funding for that, so we will need to cover that unless something else changes at the legislature. So, we're watching that very closely, I'm sure, as long, as well as all of you are as well. But those are included, about additional $2 million. And then, the Minnesota leave law is coming into effect, and currently it's planned to go into effect on January 1 of '26, so we needed to make those plans for that, and those are included into this budget as well. And so, how does our expenditure side of our budget for '25, '26 break down? Salary and wages are our biggest amount, as well as benefits, when you add those two together, a very large port of, portion of our budget. As you would expect, because we're a service industry, we provide service for students and families. Our purchase services of about $36 million, and in that particular category is a lot of our substitutes for staff, including our teachers and our paraprofessional assistants. Supplies of about eight, or $6 million, capital and equipment of about $12 million, almost $13 million, other expenditures of a little over $1 million, and then a transfer of $80,000. So, our total expenditure side of our budget's about $234 million. So, how does this end up looking overall? So, we project that fund balance based on what we have provided to you for our best estimations of our revised budget for '24, '25, so that's where we kind of get from the starting standpoint. So, our beginning projected fund balance, we're expecting to be about $34 million. We talked about the revenue side of 226 and our expenditure side of 234, so we're projecting our ending fund balance to be about that $26.5 million for '25, '26. And again, that's assuming that buildings will spend all their allocations in the current year. We know that typically doesn't happen because we allow carryover, so this picture will tend to look a little bit different, but those will be in funds that are reserved or assigned for certain particular things. And so, that is about 11.33% of the total general fund expenditures. And we tend to look at another side of this, and this is the one where we have some board requirements. And so, our projected fund balance for unreserved beginning is about $24.6 million, and this is for things that can be used for all sorts of things in the school district. Our revenue, they aren't tied to a specific revenue source. Our revenues of about $196 million, our expenditures of about $203 million, and our projected ending unreserved fund balance of about $17.5 million. And where that gets us is about 8.65% of unassigned general fund expenditures. And that is within the board's requirement of 8%. So, we have some changes coming ahead. We had a successful operating referendum in 2019, and we're committed to maintain those class sizes, and that's reflected in this budget. We know that the state has some difficulties ahead as well, and if you've, and you're keeping track of what's going on around us, you know that there are many districts that are already currently making reductions and have been for the last couple of years, and there are many that are contemplating those same kind of reductions, and we are in that same boat. So, we are not alone. And so, we are deficit spending in '25, '26 by about $7 to $7.5 million, just depending on which fund balances we're talking about. So, that leads us to the fact that we probably will definitely need to make some reductions in '26, '27, and we've already done some projections on that. Lots of reasons for this. Other districts are dealing with the same things. We, we have inflationary pressures, we had COVID funds that were ending, we have some uncertain state funding, things are changing, we have state mandates that come at us that aren't necessarily funded, and so, we're going to continue to watch the legislature just to see how these things all shake out. And then, that will help us again then figure out where that takes us for the '26, '27 school year. So, we'll be watching that very carefully, as I'm sure you all will too. So, I just wanted to give you kind of five budget takeaways. One, very good that the district is still growing, very thankful for that. We have a lot of families that are choosing us, and we're very excited and very happy to be serving them. The second thing that I would say is that the legislature is still a work in progress, and we're going to continue to monitor that, and that will give us a better picture of what the '25, '26 year will look like in the end. We'll bring that back to you as a revision next year, and then it'll also lead us to what we are looking at for possible reductions or adjustments for the '26, '27 school year. So, we'll be watching that very closely. We're still keeping those referendum promises back from 2019 that we made to the community, and we've incorporated a lot of estimates, and that's just how things develop in our budget cycle because we are kind of not, January to December, we go July to June. And then, we'll continue to monitor the district's needs and make sure that we're making thoughtful decisions as we're figuring out what we're doing for '26, '27. So, we're hoping to bring this back to you for approval at the next board meeting, and then you'll have an opportunity to revise this as we do every year in 20, in the spring of '26. With that, I'd open it up to any questions about the general fund.
Any questions for Kim?
I have a lot, but I'll wait, see if anyone else wants to go first, so I don't dominate.
Sure, I'll ask my questions. So, Kim, just to clarify, so, this budget is going to start July 1, 2025, and runs till June 30.
Right.
And then, once we put this budget in place, obviously, we're going from 11 and some percent fund balance down to just over eight and three quarters, 8.65. So, then, when we look at the amount of dollars in the district that involves around people, whether it be teaching staff, custodian, what, what percent roughly is out of our budget?
Typically, for us, if you put substitutes in there, I would say we typically run about 80%, if not a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
So, it's a good portion of our budget.
So, it's fair to say that these reductions that are going to have to come up are going to involve having layoffs, less staff, less people employed essentially?
Unfortunately, that probably is the reality, but we're going to be really thoughtful about that, and if we can make some, you know, adjustments along the way, you know, if we have retirements and those kinds of things, I'm sure that is something we're going to be paying particular attention to. So, to try to minimize those impacts to staff and families across the district, because it is difficult stuff when we are talking about reducing budgets.
When your budget's 80% people, it's almost impossible to, to do that on a district this size. Okay, and obviously, I mean, we don't know what the legislature does, we understand all that, but barring any major changes that they agree on in the 11th hour, this budget's probably 95 to 99% accurate, right?
It is, yep. I think the biggest thing that we probably have that's sitting out there, that's probably the, still the biggest wonderment, is really around summer unemployment. And so, that's that one unfunded mandate, while it's becoming unfunded, if they fund it, things will look better.
And that is the leave, correct? And that is the leave, correct?
No, that one we think, well, we believe that one's going to happen.
You're talking about the unemployment for seasonal employees?
For, for staff that don't work full year, right?
That don't work, yes, yes, okay, okay, gotcha.
So, again, we have funding, we think, for a portion of this school year, or '25-'26, but not to cover all of it. So we had to plan for that, and if that becomes, that they decide to fund it, that'll free up some funds, and we would be very excited about that. But again, we have a lot of conversation that's happening at the legislature and lots of different ideas about what that looks like and how to fix that. And I just don't think they've come to any agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. To follow up with one of Shane's questions, with the cuts most likely becoming teacher cuts, and then the referendum promise of 2019 of keeping the class sizes smaller, how do we do that?
We're going to have to figure that out. Yep, that is going to be a complicator, for sure. And so I think our goal is to try to keep as many staff in the classroom as we possibly can. But with that becomes challenges, and that is something that we're just going to have to work through. Whether that is something we can continue to do, in this particular budget, we can. And so we are trying to maintain that as long as possible. However, even with those kinds of things, sometimes the legislature takes action that doesn't allow us to continue down the path that we had had.
I would also jump in to say that we often bring a budget that's a worst-case scenario, right? When you have a business manager and then the former business manager in these two positions, right? We have to keep each other in check and go, are we being too conservative in our budgeting? But we believe what we've brought you is worst-case scenario. If, if things really go bad, this is the kind of budget that you're going to see, right? So if we come out better, that will alleviate some of those reductions that could be made. But we do not see a scenario where reductions won't be necessary at some level.
At some level, correct. And we should have some ideas as far as how our audit came out for this year. Well, then, lead us to, again, we don't want to raise major red flags because we have so many estimates. So we should have some better information as we get to November of next year, or of this school year, to tell us what it might look like for the next year. Legislature should be done by that time as well.
What do you think the financial impact of the leave law is, if you were to do a guess?
Probably, I think we did some projections, and I think we were around a half a million dollars. I think that's where we were. For just, and that was having it be half district cost as well as half employee cost, which is the maximum, kind of the typical breakdown of information and how it's supposed, how they allow us to.
Sure.
That's the calculation that we did. So we did do some calculations, and we put it in the budget.
I think what's important-
The next year will be bigger because it's a full year, and this is only half, sorry.
So I was just going to mention what's important for the public to know is that just between the two unfunded mandates of the unemployment and leave law, that's 2.5 million, which is probably guessing around 25 staff, you know, if you want to be somewhat conservative?
Depending on the types of staff, yeah.
Correct, but I mean, that's, that's a big, it's a big hit.
Yep, it's a challenge.
And so people, people have to know that they need to talk to their legislators to get, get moving on this. Because I know they had an agreement, and then all of a sudden it blew up in a committee, and especially on the unemployment. That's a $2 million hit. I can attest to every district, I talked to a lot of other board members, and they're, they're all talking cuts this year and last year. We're very fortunate not to be in that position.
Not yet, correct.
Well, you guys gave me a great lead-in to some of my concerns with this budget. When we are operating in a 7.49, almost 7.5 million deficit, and then we're talking teacher cuts next year, that doesn't really mesh with my way of thinking, right? Teacher cuts cannot happen. I won't approve a budget like that, and I can't vote for this budget as it is, and I'll kind of tell you why. But first, let me back up and say I appreciate all the time you guys put into this. I know you're the experts. A lot of what I'm going to talk about, I know we're going to have discussion and questions answered later, right? A lot of this is, some of it is the board's fault in that we're supposed to give you oversight and direction, and I don't feel we've done that sufficiently in how to create the budget, right? We, our strategic plan isn't heavily tied to the budget to help guide you. We haven't set board goals yet to help guide you. So some of what I say here may be a surprise, and may be, my fellow board members may disagree with the direction we should go, but we haven't had those discussions yet. And that highlights what your concern was with the curriculum committee, is that I think in, as we go on this road in the future, we are going to have to tweak the process and make sure we find out a mechanism to keep the board involved at an earlier process so that we don't get to a point where we're up against a July 1 deadline, and there could be issues with the budget that we feel strongly about, right? So just having said that, moving forward, some of the things I'm looking at that we've said in the past, and I know that we haven't set these as goals, but they wrap up into a package like we have in Every Child Reads by 3rd Grade, and we want to close the learning gap, right? So when I look at the budget, I want to say, and we haven't made progress on that in 10 years or so, but I'd like us to. And even if those aren't the measurements we want, I think we can agree that we want to focus on learning, right? So the budget should focus on teachers and classrooms as much as it can. And I think we can tweak some of that here, and classroom instruction. And then the other thing I'd like us to focus on is, is make long-term financial responsible fiscal balance. So what I see here is our fund balance has dropped from 39.5 to 11.3 in two years. As you said, that's not sustainable, right? We're operating in a $7.5 million structural deficit, and we don't have a long-term fix proposed, other than laying off teachers, which to me isn't a fix. So we really need to plan to restore balance and align our budget with our literacy agenda. So as I went through this in more detail, I looked at our fund balance and see it's declining, and this is a red flag warning for all of us, right? It's unsustainable, you can see this on page three of the fund balance summary. So my ask, and I'll give you guys, everyone on the board, a copy of this, it's not as long as you think it's going to be. But my ask would be that we see a stabilization plan put forward to us that doesn't rely on increased tax dollars or a referendum. I'd like to see what our plan is for the future to stabilize our budget moving forward. Also in the budget, we had a general fund transfer to building reserves. This is a new item in this year. 867,000, 867 is being transferred from the general fund to the building fund. This is on page five of that reserve summary.
Can I explain that, though?
Yep, and that's what I was going to ask, I was just going to say that, and I expected we'll explain some of this, because I'll give you all the questions, you haven't had it, but, well, go ahead.
So the way that we get our funding for LTFM is part of it comes into Fund 1, part of it comes into the building fund. And so as we have been tracking these projects over the course of time, we've been coding them all to one of the funds, and then we make a transfer back for the actual shore-up of those. And so those funds are, have always been going back and forth. And it has all to do with the building projects that we are currently doing. It can't be freed up for use for anything else other than LTFM or building projects. So I, I hope that answers your question, but-
And that we'll get into the next budget with the, the building projects. So that money is being moved from one pot to another, and it has to be moved there.
Yes.
So those are reserve funds?
Correct.
Yep, so there's unreserved and reserved, and so the reserves are pegged for a particular, designated.
That is way far down on my list of questions, is that we don't have a list of what is reserved and what's not. Do we? Especially when you look at some of the buildings.
Audit, correct.
So that, that might be helpful, because maybe that would have saved some time today with questions.
Do you mean the amount, or why we reserve it, or what?
Just the amounts, we know where we are. Because when I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, we're 7.5 in the hole. Where can we get money to avoid cutting educational staff next year to start making some corrections now would be fiscally prudent, right? But when I look at what I'm given, I don't have the information, so that's why I have to ask these questions. And I'm sure some of what I'm laying out today, you'll be able to get me more information later, but-
And if you look on page eight, there are all the reserves and what we need to spend our funds on. And those are the set-asides and the cutouts of, so yeah, they are in the budget.
So even in the, in the next budget, if we reduce some of the construction projects, that money's still going to go to that budget and just sit there?
It is, it'll just sit there.
We have under our instructional support cutbacks, I listed it as, so. I don't, I won't go into all the objects, I guess, but what I'm noticing is, like, for instructional software, instructional supplies, I know the textbooks we dropped because we had one-time purchase, but what I'm seeing in this budget already is-
Those are all the carryovers that we assume will not be spent. So if you're looking from '24-'25 to '25-'26, there will be some major adjustments showing there, and that might be what you're looking at.
Right, like, object 430 instructional supplies was cut 89.3%.
And truly, it's not cut, it's just that we have carryovers of that dollar amount that are, we are saying are going to be spent in '24-'25. Likely they'll carry over in '25-'26, but we have no idea how much each building will spend. And so we show that they'll all be spent in the '24-'25 budget, and then everybody's starting out with basic dollar amounts in '25-'26. So it looks very unusual, but that's because we do carryovers.
It's, it's a worst-case scenario budget.
Right, so-
So that doesn't mean that there's necessarily funds there to be had.
So we're funding our instructional supplies for our teachers at the same level or more as last year?
We are funding it the same as last year, but they have carryovers that they are using or saving.
It's kind of like an accrual, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Just, we use a different terminology in the business world, but yeah, it's-
So we have to show that somehow, and so that's how we do it in this particular district, many districts do.
Gotcha. And then I saw that the administrative, line 110, administrative costs are going up 9%. Teacher salaries up 6.5, I'd love to see the teachers go up 6.5%. I was wondering, it's been a trend in districts over time that we keep seeing administrative costs go up at a disproportionate portion to teacher salaries. So I'm wondering on these administrative, are these contractuals, are they COLAs, are we adding staff?
A little bit of both, yep. We're building in for the budget increases for all staff. And that's part of our budget process that we do each year. If you look, the administrative amount in total is a lot smaller than it is for the teaching staff, so 9% sounds like a lot. But when you're looking at total overall percentages, not as much. So we're talking 6% for teachers, that's of a much larger dollar amount of our whole entire budget.
And that, and that rhetoric exists out there about why administrative costs are going up across the state and the country. You know, sometimes my, my response or my elevator speech is, well, if we stop passing mandates for schools to implement, administrative costs could stabilize. I mean, that is really the truth on some of this.
That was the last question, I have a, I, I went through this just to do an example. And I, and I'll provide this with you guys, because I'm sure there's money that's tied up that not. But I'm looking at things like our travel costs, which is line 366.
That's staff development, too.
Yep, okay.
We're showing that we have a carryover in staff development. Again, those funds are set aside for specific items and can't be used for teachers' salaries.
Right, but they, so some of these things like travel, consultant fees, non-instructional tech supplies, equipment purchase, now I know the general fund capital transfer has to happen. And then some of the money we're saving on textbooks this year, none of that money can be freed up to go towards that $7.5 million deficit?
So if I could just jump in, Mike, I think what you're suggesting is that we take the time to kind of ring out the budget, right? Where are the areas that there are flexible money and where there isn't, right? I think we, we 100% align with that. And that is the work, I think, that, that comes up all the time when we draft the budget. Because, you know, I, I call it a ringing out, because when you have a deficit, right, you start going, do we really need that? Do we really need to do that? I think what you're going to find, and we could probably be here all night going through all this, you'll, you'll find that every one of those line items, we have been through and have said, is there money there to move, right? And, you know, what you're, what you're seeing here is probably not the ability for us to do that in some of this, just throwing it out there, so.
I, I appreciate your patience with me, you answered my questions.
Absolutely, no, you're asking really good questions.
Everyone can see a 7.5 million, right?
I just wanted to let you know that we have reasons, too, so.
Oh, I know, and I know you do, and there's a lot of more work that goes into it. And I know even what I'm going through isn't line-by-line item, it's just, I was just saying, what is non-teacher, non-classroom, you know, whether it be travel or whatnot, is there anywhere, like you said, that we could-
Bring it out.
Save some money, because hearing next to these-
And our goal is to keep teachers in the classroom, too, I hope you know that.
100%.
It's kind of our basic function, right?
Right, that's what we do, and educate students, for sure.
I would also add to that, we know that, you know, now, less than a year from now, we have to talk more critically about this. Just today, we had meetings to say, what can we do right now to help this soft landing a little bit more? Like, as we get resignations and retirements, we probably need to have a conversation about what was their role? Is there ways to pick it up other ways, right? If it's not a classroom teacher in front of kids, we should probably talk about that, right? And think that through, right? Those are unpopular conversations to have, right? But again, when you have a deficit coming, if we can have a soft landing on a budget by having some of those things, that's what we're doing right now. Because I think what we've done in this district well is project well, where it's like, it's not all of a sudden we have to do something, right? We're looking a year out even now and saying, let's-
Year to two years out, actually, right?
Yeah, what can we do now to kind of help, help to right-size?
Wouldn't you say that one of the problems, too, is the legislature kind of straps the hands of, of the districts?
A lot of the new funds come with a tie to something else. And so we end up reserving funds for a particular item, or we spend those funds for that particular item. But it isn't funds to be used as we would probably put them right back to the classroom. It may have a specific mandate to us as to how we need to use those funds. And again, it just makes it a little bit more difficult and makes education finance just super exciting.
Yeah, I would just jump in and say food services, the primary example of that, right? We know when kids' bellies are full, that they're going to achieve at a higher level. Isn't there a direct correlation to general fund expense, right? There's not. In the law, there's not. So we could grow a food, a food service fund balance and have to make reductions in the general fund, right? To me, that doesn't pass the common sense test sometimes, right?
Funds can go from general fund to food service, can never go back the other way.
But not the other way, right? And so those are things I think to advocate really hard for when we go down there, to say, there is a direct correlation to what happens in the classroom. We should get some flexibility, just an example.
Because, yeah, you could take money today right out of the food service fund and transfer it into the-
Correct.
-general budget, but the problem is, is the legislature's tied the hands, and we've already talked about that with our state legislators, that you've got to fix some of these things, at least give us a one-time transfer. But they're not, I, I wouldn't say listening, but they, they listen, but there's, there's not action in place right now to fix some of the items that school districts are facing.
And some of those are federal funds, too, so there's reasons, yeah.
So thank you for that.
Chair Anderson, just a few more follow-up to that, just to follow up on a couple of things. Because I hear talk about classrooms, and I agree how important it is for classrooms. But I want us to also understand how important our non-instructional staff is, right? I mean, teachers can't do their job if the custodians aren't there, because the sidewalks got three feet of snow on it. If the business department doesn't pay the heat bill, right? We have to also understand that if we only focus on just classrooms and we cut other staff, that transfers more workload to the teachers if they don't have a teaching and learning team and all of these other things. So it's really looking at it as a whole and understanding that where are the priorities? Because I wouldn't say we don't cut any teachers, but their workload increases by 45% because they don't have additional teaching and learning staff, and they're out there at 6:30 in the morning shoveling sidewalks because we're down three custodians at a building, or things like that. So I mean, it's really understanding it as a whole. When we talk about a sustainable budget, I mean, obviously that is the goal and we understand it. Is there any way in our budget as facilities is looking at the growth we have, that there's dollars in there for buildings? I mean, would there, would there be dollars in our current budget as we move stuff around to do a $10 million building? Let alone maybe a $30 or $40 million building if it was needed?
Inside our current budget?
Yeah.
No.
Even with lease levy, how many dollars are there?
Oh, with lease levy?
Well, I mean, even if we, but inside our current budget.
We would have to go, within our current budget, we have maybe a couple million dollars that we take in each year. I think it's around five for capital. But that is used for lots of different things, and that will be one of the areas where we would hope to do a little bit of recoding, and the state gives us a little leeway, so we may be able to free up a- so we may be able to free up some general fund dollars to save teachers. And so that would be our plan to do that moving forward. As far as building a, a building, we probably just don't have those kinds of funds to be able to do that. We did purchase land for buildings, and we've done that over the last two years, I believe. And so, again, we're, we're planning for the growth that we're seeing, and I think we're, I think the board did a really good job of at least, you know, being forward-thinking so that we have a place to put that, and we don't have to ask taxpayers for the, the land to put the building on, because we know we're going to need some type of facility, and so at least I think we have that. As far as having additional dollars to be able to put into building a building, I don't believe we're gonna have that kind of funding available and still being able to maintain everything that we're doing in classrooms.
And our, the LTFM that we set forward each year, the dollars that they could put aside of that, pretty much, I mean, there's some carryover on that as well, but I mean, that's kinda what's required to maintain what we have.
Correct.
Okay, and sometimes at a school, depending on the age of it, it could be maybe a few hundred thousand, all the way to several million if it needs a new HVAC system, electrical roof, parking lot.
We're doing it up river for the chillers this year, yes. We have, we have aging equipment, we have twenty, twenty-two buildings, so.
So it'd be safe to say if we-
There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done.
If we cut that down, long-term, that would probably affect us as, if we're not doing maintenance to our buildings, it's going to get worse, have additional issues, and eventually come to the point where they're so bad, you either have to close them or do something, right? I mean, we have to continue to maintain them.
Yeah, we can, we, we tend to have, our buildings are in fairly good condition, and we're very happy that we have great people that are watching those kinds of things, and yet we still have things that happen. We'll have a failed valve, and we have glycol leaks in Rogers High School during the, you know, water that happens at Rogers Middle School. We have, you know, things that are happening across the district that you just can't, you can't know everything, all of our systems are aging, and when they do, we have challenges when that comes like that. If we don't maintain them, we'll have more challenges, and then we have more remediation costs and those kinds of things that need to go to provide spaces for kids to be in every day, so canceling schools is not an option.
Right, so it's a really well-rounded balance in looking at the system as a whole, not just one individual entity, and understanding as a whole, we have to understand all the pieces of it when we're looking at the budget.
Yeah, and we're very lucky, we're an old alt facility district, and that's because we're a larger district, we have more ability to maintain those buildings. Other districts are smaller and do not have the same authority or ability, ability to do those kinds of things, and they're really struggling because they have a maximum amount per student that they get each, each year, and it doesn't cover many of the things that we can cover.
Thank you.
Very lucky, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to go on to all the other funds?
Sure.
We had so much fun with general fund, we want to do it again. So we're gonna talk about all the other funds in the school district now, and there are a lot of them. As you can see here, we have quite a host of them, from food service all the way down to health insurance, dental insurance, just debt service, all sorts of fun things that we'll just kinda go through one by one. And again, here we're talking about in the food service fund, all the revenues and expenditures that go for activities, providing food service for our students, so that nutrition for our kiddos. Assumptions that we made in this particular budget, it reflects participation due to those free school meal program that we have, and so we're seeing some really great participation, and we're even expecting that to grow even further, especially because we have more new, new students coming to us, but even just the participation level in general tends to be going up. People are taking advantage of it, and that's great. As far as our state and federal revenue, we'll expect to see some increases there as well because of those free school meals that they do provide for us. And then fund balance, we are buying equipment, old aging equipment. One of the things we can purchase with food service dollars in our food service fund balance is aid for aging equipment, and so we are continuing to look at our buildings and see what that equipment need is, and we're making those adjustments as well. So as we see our fund balance come down, that is where we see some interest, revenue earnings go down, but we're trying to get into falling underneath the state requirement. Strangely how fast things change. At the time that I did this presentation, it said three months of reserve is the limit, it was six months, and they changed it to be three months, guess what? I think it was Friday, they said, guess what, it's back to six, six months again for the next year. And then after twenty-five, twenty-six, it'll drop back down to three months of reserves is where we're supposed to be. Most districts tend to be a little bit higher than that, you'll see some bills at the legislature that's trying to address that. We're trying to address some of that through equipment purchases. Some of the other assumptions, salaries and benefits and negotiated salaries and benefits are estimated in this budget. Our labor contract, as I mentioned, our management company, estimated contract changes are included in here as well. And then, as I mentioned, the planned expenditure changes for some of that aging equipment is included. And so we're starting out with a projected fund balance of about four-point-four million dollars. We're expecting our revenues to come in at about eleven, because we're purchasing some equipment, we're expecting our expenditures to be about twelve million dollars, and then our projected ending fund balance of about three-point-two million dollars. That fund balance is twenty-six-point-four percent of expenditures, but again, we're getting closer to that six months of reserve that we can have. And we'll use those funds again for food costs, for labor, and then equipment purchases. Then we'll move on to the community service fund, and again, this houses all sorts of different things in our district, community service, community education, early childhood family kid ed, school readiness programs that we have in the district, some of our preschools, as well as our adult basic education, all fall under the community service fund. And again, here's a list of the things that we do, you can see discovery learning, you can see non-public education is included in here, and we're watching the legislature on that, they're talking about changes there as well. But you can see the host of different things that we, programs that we provide under the community education program. And again, some of our assumptions here, our fa, our fees are based on current expected activity. Our ABE program has been reinstated at Sherburne County, and so we're providing services through ABE to them, and so we'll have a revenue and an expenditure side for that. We do have some increases in fees here, adventure club increase in fees by six percent, school readiness by ten percent, and a facility rental by five percent. This also includes a transfer of a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. Because preschool screening typically runs in a deficit, the state says they want us to show that in the community ed fund now, and that we need to make a transfer out of the general fund to account for that deficit. And we're, we have a lot of youngsters that we are doing preschool screening for, and so for us, that is a transfer of a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. And then we continue our state, our Great Start Compensation Grant, and I believe we're a couple of years in on that, so that one is continuing on. On the expenditure side, contract settlements are included here, ABE expenditures again for Sherburne County, a chargeback for facility usage of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and then budget chargeback of point-eight FTE of finance specialist and a point-eight FTE of human resource specialist, and we've been doing that for a number of years. So our projected fund balance, we're starting out at seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. We have revenues of about eleven million dollars that transfer in for our, our little kiddos we're testing, and then our expenditures of about eleven, so you can see our fund balance is planning to grow just a little bit, around a hundred thousand dollars, and that fund balance is about seven-point-eight percent of expenditures. And those are reserved as well, so there's buckets for these things, so it isn't to be used for necessarily how we would like, but we do have reserves for community education, you can see five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, a reserve for early childhood family ed of two-hundred-and-eight, and then we have a local collaborative time study. We receive those funds from the county directly, that's a hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars of that eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars of reserve that we do have in the community service program. And you can see, we also have some programs that are running at a zero-based budget, so that would be school readiness, adult basic ed, and then preschool screening, and then the screening is happening because of that transfer that we're making in. Building Construction Fund, and again, this has to do with our long-term facility maintenance bonds, as well as referendum dollars that went into these, into this particular fund, and we account for all of those expenditures that are made there. So our budget includes an increase to LTFM, so we had just issued bonds in January to the tune of thirty-two million, five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, and those funds are in Fund Six, and we are expecting to continue with the projects, and they are on track. So our beginning fund balance is thirty-five million dollars, our revenue about one-point-six million dollars, and what does that include, that we're expecting is interest earnings on the funds as they come in. Our LTFM expenditure plan of twelve million, almost thirteen million, building construction funds, which are still those operating referendum dollars from two thousand nineteen of about eight-point-five million dollars. So we're projecting our ending fund balance in the debt service fund to be about fifteen million dollars. Our debt service fund goes just like your mortgage, we have principal and interest payments we need to make on bonded debt, and so we're starting out with a projected fund balance of about five-point-seven million dollars. Our revenue is at about twenty-five million, our expenditures are about twenty-five million, and our projected ending fund balance of about five-point-eight. I do have a rounding error in here, just because of how our accounts all work out, and we have just a one, a dollar I couldn't, I couldn't fix for you because we just have one that, we probably have two of these categories that are, need to both be rounded up, so there's a dollar rounding error in there, I just wanted you to be aware. So if you try to add it up, it won't add up by a dollar. One thing just to note here, too, as far as revenue goes, we levy for a hundred-and-five percent of our principal and interest payments, that's a requirement of the state that we do that, and then if there are additional funds left over after we make our principal and interest payments, the state comes through, does a recalculation, and that is rebated to taxpayers back on the levy each year, if we have additional funds. We have our self-insured property and liability internal service fund, and so we belong to MIST, and it's a conglomeration of many different districts. This is where we account for the premiums, the deductibles, and the claims for our property and liability. We're starting out with projected fund balance of about ninety-seven thousand, we're projecting revenue of about one-point-two million, our expenditures of about one-point-two-five million, and then our ending fund balance of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And again, these are projections, depending on what happens in the district, our deductible is fairly high, I think it's about fifty thousand dollars per currency these days. And if you know anything about your own homeowner's insurance, you're probably going, I'm seeing that in my home as well, because we are seeing a lot of, Mother Nature has been very plentiful in giving us opportunities to use our insurance funds. Our self-insured dental insurance service fund, we are also self-insured for dental. We did have a five percent increase for this particular year on premiums that we are planning, but again, it pays for the premiums, claims, and management services for our debt, or for our Delta Plan for all of our employees. And our projected fund balance here starts out at one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, we're assuming revenue of about one-point-seven. We'll have to see, because people are electing those right now. Our expenses, the plan is a one-point-eight million dollars with our projected ending fund balance of about ninety-nine thousand dollars. And our health insurance internal service fund, again, we're self-insured for health insurance in the district that employees can opt into, and our increase for twenty-five, twenty-six is an increase in premiums of seven percent, and you can see the history that we have had just over the last number of years. And so our projected fund balance of about three-point-six million, revenue, again, we still have people electing, and we're still wading through that, so our revenues of about twenty-three million, expenditures of about twenty-six and a half, ending projected fund balance of six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, and as Superintendent almost said, we're very conservative, and so we're expecting, we're making adjust, we're making estimates here. We have an OPEB, Irrevocable Trust, other post-employment benefits is what that means, and these are agreements that we've made with our bargaining units over the course of time. Many of these have been censored out of our contracts, but we did put a trust fund together many years ago, and so this particular fund accounts for that. And our beginning, projected beginning fund balance is eleven million, our revenues of about seven-hundred-and-seventy-five, expenditures are estimated to be forty-six thousand, and then our ending projected fund balance of a little over twelve million dollars. And then we have a debt service for that as well, and this accounts for the principal and interest payments on that bonded debt that associates to that trust, and so our beginning fund balance is eighty-six thousand, revenue of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, expenditures of about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, and our ending projected fund balance of about ninety-two thousand dollars. So with that, we made it through all the other funds, and so I'll open it up to questions you might have.
Any questions? Yes? Quick question, thank you.
Sure.
So for our self-insured dental insurance and our self-insured health insurance, with both of those fund balances declining, are we gonna be in any danger if we don't reverse course or do something of going insolvent?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think we, we plan for that, we watch that very closely, we make the adjustments. We do, we had a hit a year, which is, we have to go out and bid each, every two years for health insurance. The other insurances that we have can be a little bit further out for five years. But we do have an insurance committee, and we watch that very closely. And so again, like I said, for the health insurance, that's kinda worst-case scenario that we would have. We would still be fine, we'd be making some adjustments again. We talked about some higher premium adjustments this year, we decided to keep it at seven percent for this particular year, but that is something that we'll have to discuss as an insurance committee moving forward. And we make adjustments, and you can see, we've kinda been all over the board, we've had some years with zero percent because we felt that was the right thing to do, we've had some years where we've been in the double digits because we needed to, and it really depends, we wanna be there for our employees. And so we watch that fund very closely, and we do our best to make sure that we are providing the insurance that is needed for all of our staff. I don't know, did I answer your question?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Other questions I can answer?
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's a lot of information in a short amount of time.
Ran through it really fast, but thank you for your time tonight.
For our heads to explode. Thank you. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that we'd wanna pull out?
I move to pull the minutes from the consent agenda for correction.
Okay. Pull the minutes out of the regular meeting? Session? You said the regular meeting?
The regular.
Okay. Any other discussion? We'll just pull out the minutes, so what we'll do is we'll approve the rest of the consent agenda and then come back to the minutes. Does that sound good? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda less the minutes of the regular meeting?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Go back to the minutes, we'll need a motion to approve those minutes. We'll need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with my change.
Well, we'll make a motion to approve and then have a discussion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to correct the record to reflect what was occurred at that meeting. The minutes inaccurately summarize the discussion. I move to strike out some inaccurate wording and replace it with board members discussed concerns about the improper use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution. I would like to remove and strike out following discussions. Superintendent Elmo suggested the school board leave the meeting scheduled as they currently are at this time. Work sessions would continue to be scheduled on the fourth Monday of each month, and special meetings would be called only when there is a need.
Are we in discussion, or is there, was that a motion? You made a motion, right?
Yes, I was.
That's a motion.
And I would like to have the board vote next.
Do you need a second?
Do we have a second?
A second.
A discussion on the...
Mr. Chair, do we have a motion on top of a motion, or was that an amendment to a motion?
The amendment, there's an amendment to, the motion was to amend the minutes.
Okay, I got you.
With the new verbiage.
Okay, so I...
I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Frigberg, I heard what you read, but I wasn't able to write it down or whatnot. So can we get the basis of what's, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused here. I'm reading, we're reading 24-118, is that what we're reading? And we're changing that?
It is where it says, following the discussion, Superintendent Elmo suggested the school board leave the meeting scheduled as they currently are at this time.
In the wrong minutes?
Uh, the regular meeting.
Isn't it under 24, I'm sorry, I'm on the April 14th, 2025?
I didn't make copies.
So if I look at the, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm looking at the wrong minutes here. Am I looking? Is this the...
Regular meeting, yep.
So are we amending 24-118? Where, what are we amending?
What specifically in the minutes are we amending?
It says, I believe you seconded or motioned first, and it was following the discussion paragraph, Superintendent Elmo suggested the school board leave the meeting scheduled as they currently are at this time.
So do you have, do you, do you have a, like a striked out, revised...
Yep.
Version that you can share with the board so we can see side by side?
I don't have that for everyone, but I do recall that meeting very well, and it was about the special meeting being recorded or not recorded, or the, turning it into what it actually is, is a regular meeting. And we tabled that, if you all remember that at that time.
Yeah.
And so I'm just, I'm just making a factual correction to the minutes. We did not have a resolution where this says the answers were, you know, the school board leave the meeting scheduled as they currently are at this time.
It's, I think it's right under 24-223 of the agenda.
I'll bring copies going forward.
I agree, it's a simple correction. It's not a huge correction to make, that, it got confusing because there was some questions over Roberts rules on how you handle a discussion item. We shouldn't have even tabled it because the discussion was over, we should have just left it, but it is tabled. We actually could bring it forward right now from the table for this meeting and finish the discussion if we want, but all I think Mindy is saying is because the board actually wasn't and hasn't been in agreement on how to handle that, and the minutes make it sound like there was an agreement. So I think she just wants it striked and listed. We had the discussion, no motions were made, we didn't agree, it got tabled. Is that right?
Correct, yep. The board would vote on whether to accept the correction or not.
I think it would be helpful to have copies of that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Document, so maybe if you wanna, we, we could actually table, have a motion to table the minutes until the next meeting and put that on, back on the agenda, and then have copies of the changes of the minutes available for each of the board members to review. Would that be?
I would be fine with that.
You'd have to make a, withdraw your amendment.
I will withdraw my amendment.
Do we need a motion to table?
And I motioned to table.
Do we have a second, until the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Do we have a second on that?
Mr. Chair, you have a motion on there. You need to shoot the motion down and then table it.
Okay, yep.
So board members, we would need to vote this down and then make a motion to table it, and then we would table it to the next meeting.
Point, yeah, point of order taken. So we need to vote on this motion whether to amend the minutes? And any further discussion on that? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
So the amendment, so what I just heard in the discussion was we're gonna shoot the amendment down, we're gonna shoot the motion down, table it, and we're gonna get writing next time and then approve it.
Right.
That's what I understood.
Yes.
If I misunderstood, I apologize.
Yeah, so Mindy withdrew the amendment, so we have to vote on the motion.
To table it.
Can't withdraw an amendment when it's been seconded. You have to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
So maybe you would just want to do a roll call vote?
Do a roll call vote. I apologize for that.
And Mr. Chairman, to clarify, so we're going to vote on the amendment?
We're gonna vote on the amendment. Once you give me your paper, I'll read the amendment.
So the plan is to vote no so we can table it, correct?
And then, yeah, we put the motion to table forward next.
So Director Madsen, just to clarify, a motion's been made, it's been seconded. If you want to table it, yes, you would vote no to the current motion, and it will be tabled for further discussion if you need to read how it was written. If you agree with the motion, you can vote yes, and it would still pass now, and it would carry, and it would be stricken as is, so.
Point of order. We don't have the motion. We have an amendment to the motion.
Right.
And vote yes on the amendment, and the amendment would pass.
I'm trying to figure out what the amendment is off this. What's, so we're striking what and replacing with?
Uh, it is right here. That's what we're striking.
But what, what are we gonna replace it with?
Uh, with board members discuss concerns about the improper use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution.
Okay, so we're replacing... So the amendment is to strike... What are we, what are we striking here? This doesn't say what we're striking.
Uh, it is this here.
Okay.
So it would be under the work session? Yeah, it was just another one if it went through for Londa. Yeah, but then here's what he's talking about. Yeah, this is probably an easier copy. That was for Londa.
Okay. So the amended minutes say, following discussions, Superintendent Elmo suggested the school board leave the meeting scheduled as they currently are at this time. Work sessions would continue to be scheduled on the fourth Monday of each month, and special meetings would be called only when there is a need. That would be struck and replaced with...
Right there.
Board members discussed concerns about the improper use of special, or use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution. So that would be the amended minutes. Does that make sense? So we're striking just a paragraph and inserting, and replacing the paragraph with board members discuss concerns about the improper use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution. So that would be the amended motion to the minutes. Make sense? It's reasonable, but I, I would say it would be helpful to have a copy.
Yes.
Okay, I will next time. I usually do, so, all right.
Does everyone understand what the amended motion is now?
One more time.
Okay.
So we're voting yes to...
Yeah, what are we voting on, right?
All we're voting on is the amended motion, which says, board members discuss concerns about the improper use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution.
Okay, so we're all in favor of getting another, a copy of this, we can see them. We're saying no to this.
Correct. Yeah, if you'd rather wait and say no, we can vote no on this amendment.
But that's what happened at the meeting, right?
But yes, I think...
So we could just vote yes and be done with it, what he just read?
Correct. So any discussion on this amendment?
So are we gonna discuss this now? I mean, I guess improper use? If we're gonna discuss this, or, I mean, I can't, I apologize. I'm happy to look at this stuff, it's just hard when it comes this fast.
Right.
And I don't have it, I mean...
All right, well, I, I think we should wait then, and I'll give everybody...
You can just vote.
It's an easy amendment, but I just remember what happened.
And I'm happy to look at it on paper and, and make adjustments as needed, 100%, so. Okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? I'll read it again. The amendment is to insertion of, in the minutes, board members discuss concerns about the improper use of recurring special meetings and whether those meetings should be recorded. No action was taken, and the item was tabled without resolution. So all those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion does not pass, so now we're voting on the main motion of the minutes. All those in favor of the minutes as they are written signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And so we'll need a motion to table that until the next meeting?
Mr. Chair, I move, we table the motion for the meeting minutes dated April 14th, 2025.
We have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, like sign? Motion passes. I think... Just remember the upcoming dates of importance at the next meeting. I will be not here at the next meeting, just to let you know, I'll be out of country. Next meeting is Wednesday, May 28th, and we have graduations coming up the following week, so it's an exciting time watching our students walk the aisle and congratulate them, so need a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. The meeting is now over.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.